Good morning. At this time, I would like to begin our meeting for the LaPorte County Commission, Wednesday, July 1st. We'll call to order and then we'll have the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Morozynski?
Present.
Commissioner Mottius?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to consider the agenda for today's meeting.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Hold it. I got a call from Jeremy. They want to remove the thing about the parks that's going to go before the park board. So he said he didn't really want to discuss it this morning. So we'd like to amend the agenda to remove 8A.
I second that.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second to remove the 8A item from the park superintendent. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion has carried. Any other additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda as presented with the exclusion of 8A. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consider approval of the June 17th, 2020 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for June 17th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consideration of claims.
We have payroll ending June 19th, 2020, in the amount of $1,201,123.34. And miscellaneous claims, $830,885.75.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. For public information, all commissioners have received the claims in advance and have reviewed everything with any questions or concerns they may have addressed before we vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, any public comments?
Madam President, Dr. Doss is here. If I could request you to just let her make her presentation.
Okay. Perhaps you could introduce Dr. Doss.
Dr. Doss, welcome. Thanks for joining us. Dr. Doss, she's the medical director of the Indiana Department of Corrections Medical Unit. Maybe that is the right terminology. And again, thanks for joining us. Recently, Dr. Doss, we saw an increase in the number of COVID cases reported out of the Westville Correctional Center. And I brought that to your attention. And I'm very grateful that you were able to join us this morning to give an update on how you're handling the COVID crisis at the Westville Correctional Center and also at the ISP. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me, Dr. Cora, and having the entire commission. We, as the Department of Corrections, were all kind of trying to brainstorm how best to get things going back on track. We really, you know, when COVID-19 came through, it really did hit Westville very hard. So we kind of stopped and ceased all operations so it was peace. So now that we're starting to get offenders coming back, the prevalence of cases is way down, you know, and staff are all back and all that kind of thing, trying to consider how to reopen. So the offenders at Westville Correctional Facility do help by working in the community, so to speak. The offenders who are in our low-level program, they do go out to the community and work. So when I was making the decision to decide, is it okay for these guys to go out to work, I said, well, let's do our due diligence. Let's do everything that we can to make sure that we're making the right decision here. So we decided to test all of them before they went out to the community. And that's where we had about 17 or 18 who tested positive for COVID. Now, all of these offenders are asymptomatic. So we've been working with the State Department of Health to say, like, you know, when did they contract it? Were they, you know, is this still a lingering case, so to speak? Because we still do have guys who are testing positive 60, 65 days out. So I'm not sure if these folks are still in the infectious window, so to speak. We definitely have our hospital cases are dramatically down. We only have one person in the hospital out of Westville who is COVID positive. So overall, big picture, things are looking better from a COVID and DSC perspective. However, we still want to make sure we're remaining vigilant and doing everything that we can in our power to limit the spread in the community. So with that being said, these guys that tested positive, we didn't send any of them out to the community just because those tested positive. Of course, we don't want them out there. And then the ones who were exposed to these guys, we don't want them out there as well. We just kind of quarantined all of them to make sure that we were doing our due diligence. As far as Indiana State Prison, again, cases are down there. We don't have anybody in quarantine, anybody here in isolation. And I, again, attribute that to the physical plant set up at Indiana State Prison. I'm happy to take any questions, but otherwise, I just wanted to make sure we're fully transparent.
So to summarize, Dr. Doss, the reason we saw an increase was because you started testing those individuals who you wanted to go out and do some work in the community. And before that, as a precautionary measure, you wanted to do the testing on all of them. And that's the reason why we saw some of them. And you already said that the individuals who tested positive, they are being quarantined. And then the units they came out of and the individuals who have been exposed to them in those units have also been quarantined?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, thanks for coming and giving us a quick update. And as we mentioned in our previous conversations, that this is a significant number of positive cases came out of the correction facilities. And there are many individuals who work in these two facilities, who live in the community. And as Commissioner Mottius has said so many times, these are friends and neighbors. So we want to make sure that we get a handle on this and keep it under control. So I want to thank you for your cooperation in keeping us informed and doing the best you can to keep it under control.
Thank you. And please keep in touch with any questions. Come on. Take care.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We have time for other public comment. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak at this time? All right. Next on the agenda, let's move to department reports and department head comments.
Madam President, before we go into those, I want to go ahead and follow up. I know we were going to have the park superintendent here regarding his concern about fireworks in county parks. And I want to clarify for the record that despite the explicit wording of fireworks, we have found provision in an existing park department ordinance that would allow the sheriff's department to continue to enforce against any fireworks. I think it's important, particularly with the Fourth of July coming up, that the park superintendent's concerns be noted and that it is clear by this commission and by the park department that there are not to be fireworks permitted in the county parks. This is pursuant to ordinance number 90-15, which was passed December 3rd, 1990 by the commission. It does not explicitly use the term fireworks, but it talks about combustibles, so as to cause smoke, haze, odor, sparks. It's our interpretation, the interpretation of our office. Fireworks are specifically prohibited under that ordinance pursuant to Jeremy's request and the park board's request. We're going to have some further amplification of ordinances going forward. But I wanted this commission knowing, the sheriff's department knowing, that it's our interpretation that under ordinance number 90-15 passed back in 1990, fireworks are explicitly -- because they are combustibles, they are prohibited in the county parks. And so all users of the parks should know that going into the Fourth of July weekend.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Any other department head reports? I would like to mention that we are making a transition in the highway department. Today is the first day that Dwayne Warner, who was assistant superintendent, he has transitioned into the superintendent spot. As we work to transition, our longtime superintendent, Bob Young, is heading toward retirement at the end of the year. So they have -- we've worked out a transition plan so that Mr. Young can share and help Dwayne begin his new leadership position and make sure that there's no dropped projects and that all the knowledge that Mr. Young has imparted to Mr. Warner over the years will continue until the end of the year, at which time we will have a retirement announcement for Mr. Young. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. I ask all department heads to please provide support for Mr. Warner as he begins his new position.
Madam President, Mr. Mancuso is here. He wanted to give a quick update on the activities in the health department.
Great.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just a quick update. You know, we had 19 cases yesterday. The cases are going up, but we are doing a lot more testing now. The opt-in site has moved to the Armory there in the port. So it went from Michigan City High School to the Armory. Each day, we're getting probably 100 tests a day.
It's going to seven.
So that could be the reason why we have a spike in it, but at least we're getting a lot of the tests done. That's about it. I don't know if there's any questions or...
Mr. Mancuso, Tony, when will they start doing it at the Armory? Is it starting today?
No, that's not correct. That's not correct.
They're there today. They're not today.
Or is it at the Civic?
It's at LaPorte Civic, not LaPorte Armory, is my understanding.
Oh, it's at the Civic. I'm thinking of the old place. No, I'm sorry, the Civic.
Civic, okay. Is it LaPorte Civic and it starts today?
Yes, it starts today. They're there today. We have flyers out. I'm sure Daniel got it out to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's at the Civic.
Okay.
Could you also -- oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I wanted Mr. Mancuso to give us an update on the assisted living and nursing homes because that was our hotspot in the previous surge. So what's the status?
The nursing homes are okay. We did have an outbreak at a daycare, but we took that at one of the nurses' one out there. And they had him there at patrol. They quarantined himself. They closed their, uh, daycare down. So that's, that was taken care of. They gave, if nothing changed at the nursing home, their all the assisted livings are still the same. So at least there's no cases there.
Okay.
So other than that, I don't know anything else.
Madam President, I just wanted to mention that the nursing homes, there has not been any significant spike. But as Mr. Mancuso mentioned, there was, there are a few cases at the daycare center. And then the nurse from the county health department visited them and the daycare have been in touch with the Indiana State Department of Health. And they have taken all the precautions and they have closed their daycare and they have isolated themselves till they become non-infectious. I just want to emphasize how helpful this testing site has been for the residents in LaPorte County. Again, I want to thank our health department and the EMA director and everybody who worked in with us to help get this located. I see so many patients who are easily referred there. They don't need a doctor's order. There is no cost to them. And they don't have to have any reason why. I mean, if somebody wants to get a test done, it's like a testing on demand, you know, they can go and get the test done. So that has been a significant improvement in testing. Tony, you're still there. In terms of contact tracing, you know, we used to do it at the county health department. The state has taken over that. Have you been following up on that and is that functioning smoothly?
Yeah, Jenny follows up on that every day. So she knows what's going on. That's where she's at right now. So that's why she couldn't tell this to me. So that's what she's doing now. Yeah, they're still doing the contact tracing and Jenny's keeping track of all the reports that she sends out with commissioners. That's where she gets that from.
Very good. Thank you.
The only other addition I would mention is that for those individuals who are interested in the COVID testing, if they go to the county website, all the information, there's a phone number there if you aren't able to use the online reservation system. So there's lots of information. It's also on social media. We've tried to really saturate it so people can get free testing, no doctor's orders, and available at LaPorte Civic for, starting today. So it has left the Michigan City High School site and is at LaPorte Civic for the next foreseeable future. Any other department heads? There's a few of you on Zoom. Anyone have anything that they wish to report? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have requests. We have a request from the voters' registration office for computers. Ms. Stevens and Ms. Kane.
Morning.
Good morning.
So we have been, we have been having just a few hiccups here and there.
Talking to the mic?
Oh, is that better?
You could raise the mic a little.
We've had a few hiccups here and there with machines not working quite properly. We call IT a lot. They're awesome. Yesterday, Monday morning, I had an issue where I went to boot up my computer after the weekend and it just wasn't working. So I called IT. They got in and we tried to get it going. That wasn't working. AJ had to come down to our office. And at that point, AJ realized we are running Windows 7, which I believe has been just, it's really outdated. And with such a big election year, we have concerns. I know I've talked with Darlene and she's nice enough to help get estimates and stuff. So we're really here asking your permission to go to the council.
Okay. Darlene, you want to add anything to that?
On Windows 7, actually, they had pushed back the support for that. But now it is no longer supported by Microsoft. And we have received quotes and we're just asking, you know, I'm in full support that they replace all four of their machines, the two that they use and plus also the two part-time ones. And we're just asking to go approach council for an additional appropriation.
How much would that cost?
Approximately, I'm guessing about $6,000 or $7,000.
Okay. Just for the software or for the hardware also?
Hardware also.
Hardware also, okay.
Yeah.
Madam President, I, you know, considering how important that work is and we have a big election coming up, I think we need to get themselves, get them all ready for it. So I make a motion to support the transition to the newer form of Windows with new hardware and make a motion to allow them to approach the council.
I'll second your motion, sir.
We have a motion and a second to support the request from the voters' registration office for new and updated computers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion has carried.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have old business. Is there any old business that is not on the agenda that needs to be attended to? Commissioners, no? Moving on, new business. Consider John Emery Road final design proposal. Mr. Sullivan, I believe you're on the line.
You want me to take it, Jane? Yes, you got it. Good. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning.
Yeah, morning. Yeah, this is for the John Emery Road, there were crossings improvements, the contract with Weaver for the design.
Would you speak into the microphone, please, a little?
105%.
It's hard to hear.
Jake, can you turn your speakers down?
Yeah, just a second. Sorry, go Mitch, Mitch, that real quick. But this is 105% reimbursable, RIN dot NIC, the actual, so we're getting administrative fees for getting the contact, not only for the major services, but also for the...
The iPhone says Mitch. Is it Mitch Bishop's or is it Jason?
Hello?
Yeah, we're unable to hear you.
Yeah, Mitch, were you speaking?
I'm Mitch. Did you not hear with Jake?
No.
Oh, I hear Jake, okay.
Yeah, if you could, somebody could repeat what was said, please.
I can summarize it.
Yeah, could you, please?
If you can hear me.
Yes, please.
So before you is a contract for design services for intersection railroad crossing improvement on John Emery Road and 700 North in New Carlisle. The amount is $52,200. Just to jog your memory, I came in front of you probably six to nine months ago. At that time, we signed the MOU and received grant funds. MOU with NICD and INDOT and ourselves basically reimbursed grant funds that would cover 105% of this project. Since then, I received funding from council. And this, before you, would be the start of the project for Weaver Consultants to do, provide the design services for that project. So this will get the ball rolling on the project. It's been a concern, I think, at the time when I came in front of you a few months ago, there's accidents at the intersection, past, it's a bad skew. So there's a minor side issues and it's going to be railroad crossing improvements, including signals out there and turn lanes to help get traffic off 700 North. So any questions? I know Shaw reviewed this already and it's been approved by council. Money has, and we're getting 105% back. This is an 80/20. This is 100 plus five for MYHA's administration services. So any questions you might have?
No. I've been familiar with this project for the last couple of years. We've been working on this. And I know Mitch has brought it to us before. It's definitely something that we need to do, safety-wise. And when is the last time we got a grant for 105%? It can't beat that.
That's pretty sweet.
I would make the motion that we approve the final design.
Yeah, I second it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the John Emery Road final design proposal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Consider proposed addendum to the Tiger Foods service contract, Sheriff's Department.
The jail. So as you guys are aware, we have Tiger in our kitchen and it's been progressing very well. We're happy with what they're doing. So with that being said, the addendum is going to be in regards to just always looking to be a little bit better. So we feel that it's going to be beneficial to our staffing. There's, as well as ours, another benefit to this addendum is going to be the use of our equipment. May not really think about it, but using our dishwasher one extra day or one time a day less is a wear and tear issue. So there's benefits to that. So what this is really entailing is instead of, we were a three cooked meals a day. The state standard is one. So we were well beyond the state standards. But we are now looking to go with two cooked meals plus the third meal being in the evening that will be served, still meeting all the caloric needs that we are required to do. Actually, we do better than that. But that'll be served in a sack lunch, so to speak. So that's really the...
The main change.
The main change to it.
So will that save the county dollars?
It's going to be the same price that we are paying now. Their rationale is that they're going to have more items served in that sack lunch.
Okay.
Okay. So you were saying some of the benefits would be reduction on the use of our utilities and machines for washing dishes?
Exactly.
And what about the staffing? You mentioned that maybe a way we could save on that.
Well, with Tiger staffing, they will not be in the kitchen as many hours.
I see.
That's going, then, the benefit to that on our end is our staffing, we won't be down in the kitchen either.
Okay.
To include our inmates. They are workers.
Yeah.
And they're doing, they do a lot for us to keep our operations functional. So we have let the county attorney review this and I believe he's, you know, in agreement with us, so.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve this addendum.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the addendum to the Tiger Services food agreement at the LaPorte County Jail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do you need a copy of this? You have it? Okay, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, consider Maximus 5D child support cost allocation contract. We need to unmute you?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
This is our annual 4D review that Maximus has done for us for several years. And this is a three-year contract. They had a change in personnel last year, so we missed a year. And so we're going forward with recreating last year and then this year and moving forward. And this is the standard contract and Mr. Friedman has reviewed it and I think he's okay with it.
Yes, I am. And certainly Maximus is kind of the gold standard on these 4D cost allocation contracts. So we're certainly comfortable recommending it to the commission.
Madam President, I make a motion to ratify, I'm sorry, to approve the Maximus 4D child support cost allocation contract.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the child support cost allocation contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we'd like to ratify our June 29 submission from the LaPorte County Commission of three names which were given to the governor's office for consideration as appointments under state bill 367 to the NICD board for input on the allocation of the transit development district funds to LaPorte County. This is in regards to the South Shore Transit Improvement Project, which we have been working on at every level of government, from federal to state to our local government. So this is, yesterday, the commissioners worked as a team to propose three names of LaPorte County residents to the governor's office for their consideration. And I will give you those three names and tell you a little bit about each one. The first name was Don Babcock. Don is a LaPorte County resident and works as the Economic Development Director for NIPSCO and has a long history with Redevelopment Commission in Michigan City. Leah Conrady was the second name. Leah is the former president and CEO of OneRegion and is now, has taken the helm at Conrady Plastics in Portage. She's a go-getter and also founder of NIRAC. Clarence Hulse was the third name. Clarence is the executive director of the Economic Development Corporation of Michigan City and is very closely tied with all of the South Shore Improvement Project plans. So those names were submitted and at this time, we would like to be able to ratify that at our public meeting. So those were the names that were submitted to the governor's office.
Madam President, I wanted, first of all, congratulate all three of them. And I also felt good that we were submitting three very competent and talented people, with the names of three competent, talented people for this role. So that tells us that in LaPorte County, we have a deep bench.
Right. Really good point. So when I sent that letter off to the governor's office, I did make note, I told a little bit about each person, but I also said any one of these choices would be an exceptional choice for LaPorte County because they know our, they know our history, they're part of our heritage, and they are movers and shakers and know how to make things happen. So any of those names would be of consideration, would be good for LaPorte County. The other thing I do want to mention is the reason we had to submit the names in advance of this morning's meeting is because there was a deadline of midnight last evening. And we did not want to miss the opportunity to make sure LaPorte County was represented.
I make a motion to ratify the submission of these three names.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second to ratify the June 29 submission of three names to the governor's office for a subcommittee on the NICD board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consider the resolution supporting no-excuse mail-in ballot requests for the fall election. Commissioner Cora?
Madam President, I had requested Ms. Friedman to draft this resolution because I feel that this coronavirus is here to stay for the next few months for the foreseeable future. And anything we can do to help voters vote and exercise their right to vote and at the same time, keep them safe, is extremely important, not only for them, but for all of us. And especially as being a physician who deals with many of these individuals who have complications if they go out in public. I think this is the wise thing to do and I think it's important that we in this county take leadership on this issue and make the request to the governor and the secretary of state. They did a great job in the primary by allowing no excuse mail-in ballot and I'd like for them to continue to do that for the fall election.
Thank you. Any comments?
No. But this is a resolution, do we need a public hearing on that?
Hmm.
This is a resolution?
Yeah, that's, thank you, that's a good point.
And you may want to read it into the record too. I know you've talked about it.
So we'll read the resolution into the record and then open it up for public comment on the no excuse mail-in ballot proposition?
So Madam President, if it's okay, then I'll go ahead and read this into the record. Whereas the citizens of Indiana are in the midst of the worst pandemic in modern history due to a novel coronavirus and as a result of the disease it causes known as COVID-19, state, county, and city officials have ordered various limitations, the central feature of which is to limit contact between persons, commonly known as social distancing. And whereas public health officials warn that government ordered social distancing will probably be in effect for a number of months. And even after such directives are lifted in Indiana, life in the public square will not be conducted, will need to be conducted cautiously with additional restrictions and loosening likely to be reimposed at additional intervals until an effective vaccine is discovered and is broadly available and distributed. Experts estimate a timeframe that exists either in the spring or summer of 2021 until an effective vaccine will be ready for public distribution and use. Whereas in recent days, a dozen states have halted or rolled back their reopening plans as COVID-19 surges in the South and West. And the global debt toll has now surpassed half a million with a fully one quarter of those deaths occurring in the United States. Whereas on April 22, 2020, Dr. Anthony Fauci, an immunologist who is the head of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, stated with great certainty that we will have coronavirus in the fall. I'm convinced because of the degree of transmissibility that it has, the global nature, what happens with that will depend on how we are able to contain it when it occurs. Whereas these pandemic conditions will have a significant impact upon the upcoming elections in Indiana, just as they did for the spring primary, when members of the Indiana Election Commission used their emergency powers granted them under the Indiana law and took not only the unprecedented step of postponing Indiana's primary election from May 5 to June 2, but they suspended the requirements of the Indiana Code Section 3-11-10-24A, which described some 13 categories of voters who are entitled to vote by mail and instead allowing, allowed any requesting voter to do so. And whereas it is reasonable to expect that COVID-19 will continue to be in circulation without a vaccine or effective treatment through the elections of 2020, and it is also reasonable to expect that some forms of social distancing will continue through November 2020, especially with regards to large public gatherings as occur at polling places on a presidential election day. And whereas even if there is an easing of social distancing just four months from now, there will continue to be a public and personal health risk attendant to large gatherings such as voting at polling places because many persons, especially those with compromised immune systems or pre-existing underlying health issues, will remain susceptible to becoming infected. And whereas it is critically important that election officials begin immediately to prepare for the November 3, 2020 elections where far more ballots are cast and turnout is traditionally very high in a presidential election. And whereas despite claims by some that voting by mail is ripe for fraud, both Indiana's secretary of state and governor have rejected such claims, with the governor making clear that we have long been voting by mail, I have high level of confidence in the integrity of our election process. Whereas the same conditions that existed in the spring that required the Indiana Election Commission at the behest of the governor and secretary of state to permit no excuse absentee voting are likely to exist in and around the November elections. And whereas recent surges in infection rates in nearby counties have caused public health officials in San Joe, Elkhart, and La Grange Counties to impose masking requirements to help deter recent spikes in the spread of the disease. And whereas until Indiana Election Commission orders 2020-37 and 2020-40, no Indiana court or administrative agency had issued an opinion on order constraining voter disabilities as issued in IC Section 3-11-10-24A4 to include all voters who are physically unable to be in close proximity to another person. No Indiana court or administrative agency had ever construed the term illness as used in IC Section 3-11-10-24A3 to include any asymptomatic individual who fears contracting the virus and COVID-19 by venturing into a crowded public space with others such as a public polling place. And whereas pursuant to IC Section 3-11-4-3ANC, applications for an absentee ballot for November 3, 2020 general election may be submitted now and not later than 12 days before the November 3, 2020 election, which is October 22, 2020. And whereas without support from governor and the secretary of state requesting the Indiana Election Commission issue orders similar to those issued in the spring permitting no excuse absentee balloting, many voters may be denied an absentee ballot because of conflicting interpretations on who is a voter with disabilities and who is confined to a voter's home on election day because of an illness and who is thus entitled to vote by mail. And whereas the fundamental right to vote implicitly includes the right to equally participate in a trustworthy process that does not require a citizen to choose between endangering his or her health or safety and exercising the franchise. And whereas voting by mail in Indiana has been permitted for several decades and has always been and remains a safe, reliable, honest, and secure method of participating in the electoral system and exercising one's right to vote, not therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lepore County, Indiana, that we respectfully call on Indiana's governor and secretary of state to encourage the Indiana Election Commission to adopt a resolution or resolutions similar to those adopted in the spring of 2020 explicitly allowing and permitting no excuse absentee voting for the presidential election slated to occur in Indiana on November 3, 2020. We also respectfully request our area legislators convey our views on this topic and this resolution to the attention of the governor, secretary of state, and Indiana Election Commission, all of which is resolved on this first day of July, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Cora.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up any public comment on this issue? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the resolution for no excuse voting? Anyone online? All right, hearing none. Commissioner, oops, excuse me. Go ahead.
This is Joe Golick, but I'm talking as a citizen right now.
Okay.
I am opposed to the mail-in because of the fraud factor and I know what I've heard. But I haven't been explained anything as far as how this is going to work. Is it going to be compared to the county records where people have passed away in the county? And if they're going to be noted somehow when those ballots come in? It is open for fraud, there's no doubt about it. And I could cite a ton of examples on a national level primarily, but local level also. And I don't want to get into that kind of a detail. I just want a fair election and I want to make sure it happens. I don't know if it's, you know, the trade-off is people and their health versus the election. Both are extremely important. I understand that. But I for one am against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golick. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this issue?
Madam President, I did vote by mail during this primary. And what I noticed was that when I made the application for a mail-in ballot, it was linked to my driver's license. Isn't that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Dan, you have been with this, doing this for quite a while. Isn't it not linked to the driver's license?
Your signature is compared. Your signature that's on file with voter registration. When your application comes in, whoever's processing your application, the signature is verified with what's in the system. Then when you vote by mail, your ballot that comes back, the envelope, the ABS6, that signature is matched as well to your application. The signatures both have to be, both match in order to be accepted.
Yeah. No, what I felt was the state has done a remarkably good job of ensuring that it is safe and secure and that my signatures were compared and I really, again, this is my personal opinion, the claims of this being, there's room for fraud, I think they are overblown. And especially when we are dealing with pandemic situation, I think allowing all the individuals the ability to vote by mail and keeping themselves safe from this virus and especially those who are elderly and who have underlying pre-existing conditions and also those who are healthy but who live with people who have underlying health issues. Because this is something I deal with every day in my life. So I feel strongly that this is the right thing to do, especially in the circumstances we live in this year with the coronavirus pandemic. And I also congratulate the state of Indiana, the governor and secretary of state for the measures they have taken to make sure that this is safe. I was impressed.
Commissioner?
I have to agree with everything the doctor said, but I also see some credence in what Mr. Golick said. We have heard rumors. And if you remember two elections ago, a unscrupulous individual who was going out, wanting to register people and had all the ballots sent to his house, that's the kind of thing we have to watch out for. And there were a lot of issues in the last election that we need to make sure don't happen again. And a lot of it was centered around the write-in ballot. I wrote in also. My wife and I both voted by mail. But it's easy to identify those areas where there could be fraud. And if we're going to encourage mail-in ballots, then we need to also make sure that we explore every possibility of fraud. Because that is a pretty big fear by a lot of people. And it didn't just happen that way. So I would, I don't know if you made that motion, but if you did, I will second the motion that we accepted.
Yeah, I make a motion in support of this. And I also want to add to what Commissioner Mrazinski said, that in case if this were to happen, we'll have a lot of mail-in ballots and then we need more personnel to make sure that it goes through smoothly. And we'll have to work with our election board to make sure it goes smoothly. And I think that, and one of the reasons we are having this resolution today and sending it to the governor and secretary of state is because if they make the decision quickly, then it'll give us enough time to plan, to prepare, and it'll help our county clerk and election board to get the necessary materials, have the necessary staff to do the counting effectively in a timely manner and without any mistakes and errors. And I think all these are very important. So that's the reason why it's important that we start early in this process.
So I think you just nailed something that's really important to your point, Commissioner Mrazinski. Dr. Cora talked about being prepared and I think that's, that is where we really need to err on the side of being over-prepared and, you know, we don't want to be under-prepared at all. And I think there were some challenges in the spring. We want to make sure that those challenges are solved. So, you know, when you think about a polling place, think about how many times you've been to a polling place and all the people that are in line ahead of you and they all go up to the machine and they all put their little hands on those little stylus and the buttons on the machine. Those are all places where germs of any kind, including COVID-19, would be spread. But also when you consider the poll workers who are meeting all the voters for 12 hours face-to-face, signing on the register, those are all opportunities for viruses, the virus to be transmitted, transmitted then across the county as those people go forward. And, you know, I think if it was, if the asymptomatic issue was not such a part of this virus, it might be a little bit easier to manage. But the fact that so many people, you heard Dr. Doss from Department of Corrections, talk about all of those folks not having symptoms but still being carriers of the virus. So I think we would want to err on the side of caution. In addition, when you think that the president of the United States has voted absentee, the vice president of the United States has voted absentee, our senators and congressmen, you know, many of them have voted absentee and do so every year. When I lived in Washington State, we voted absentee for eight years. Every single, there's no polling places there at all. Every voter that is registered gets a ballot. You don't have to file a paper, but they compare everything via technology with your state ID card, your social security signature and your driver's license. So while they're, you know, I hear Commissioner Mrazinski's discussion about fraud, I think that fraud needs to be addressed if there is any. But by and large, the data and the research has proven that voting by mail can be safe and can be effective. And certainly in the days of a virus and a pandemic, that is, since 1918, we haven't had anything this severe. We need, you know, exceptional and unusual times call for exceptional and unusual measures. So perhaps this is the time for us to begin to explore permanent voting by mail because I think it's, it is certainly with technology, the way of the future. So at this time, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Madam President, I have one other comment and that is depending on how severe this pandemic is in October, November, end of October, November, I'm also concerned whether there'll be enough poll workers.
Yes.
To be at the polling places. And that's a concern. And I have seen situations where, I think it was in Louisville or something, for the whole city of Louisville, I think they had one or two polling places because they're confined poll workers. So I think those are all practical problems that we need to address and we can't address it at the last moment. We need to be planning this.
That's right.
We need to be prepared. And I think that's the reason why we brought this up and again, I make a motion to adopt this.
I'll second your motion.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt this resolution to the governor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have commissioners' comments. Commissioner Mrazinski?
Yeah, I'll have more information on this at our next meeting, but for any of the veterans in the county who've been through the stand-down at the Armory over the past few years, it's a really great event. It's a very, it's a good event for veterans to go to, where people show their appreciation, pick up a lot of good free stuff. But since the pandemic is here, we normally have that at the Armory. Senator Braun's office has reached out to me to ask if we couldn't do it at the fairgrounds, being on the fairboard. I did discuss it with them and also with the FEMC and through Larry. And so this year, August 7 will be the stand-down, but it's going to be at the fairgrounds. It'll be drive-through. So veterans can drive through, you won't have to get out of your car, whatever the stuff they're handing out, you'll get it right through the window of your car. So like I said, I'll have more information on that at our next meeting, but it is August 7, something veterans look forward to. And one other thing, this weekend, everybody knows it, it's the 4th of July. That's what everybody, that's all they know, it's the 4th of July. Official designation of this Saturday is Independence Day, the day the United States declared their independence from the ruler of England. And that is why we celebrate, that is what we celebrate. And there's a lot of people to thank for your independence and your freedom. I don't care if the men and women put their life on hold and joined the military, I don't care if they were in a war or if they're in Oklahoma. They did what they were assigned to do. They keep our country safe and great. And so there's two things that you need to make sure you thank, your veterans. And number two, please, fly your American flag, be proud to be an American and let's be safe out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Cora?
Madam President, as I was coming to this meeting, I was thinking what we have gone through over this first six months of this year. It is just unbelievable. We have been through this COVID crisis, we are still going through the COVID crisis, we are going through this...
through over this first six months of this year. It is just unbelievable. We have been through this COVID crisis. We are still going through the COVID crisis. We are going through this economic crisis that is a result of the COVID crisis. And then we have seen the social unrest as a result of the unfortunate murder of Mr. George Floyd. And all these, in, in six months, it has really been a challenging time, but I appreciate working with both of you to navigate the county through some of these challenging times. You know, I see in my practice not only the effects of the virus and the health effects, but also the, the mental stress that people are going through because they're losing jobs and the economic impact that is having. And so I, I really believe that for us to get through this safely and get into our economic recovery, we need to control the virus. And I think that's, I cannot emphasize how important that is. And that is the reason why, as we are reopening our county buildings, we, we have highlighted our four-pillar approach to controlling the virus. And until we have a vaccine, we, we cannot return to normalcy like in the pro-COVID days. But till then, these are the four pillars that we need to stick to, to get us there and help our businesses reopen. And I really give credit to a lot of business people. When I go into the businesses, they are taking the precautions, they're practicing social distancing, their staff is wearing masks, they're doing their best to protect their customers, and I really thank them for doing that. And I really want to encourage everybody to make sure you wear a mask, please practice social distancing, hand hygiene, and also if you, one of you is sick, please don't go to work, and because then you will prevent infection in others. And by doing that, you're going to protect yourself, you're going to protect your family, you're going to protect your coworkers, and you're going to protect your community. And I, this is not something the government can do. Each individual, each family has to do their civic duty. I really consider this as a civic duty to protect each other from this virus, and that way we can return as close to normalcy as possible. And I also want to thank you for supporting as we went through this turmoil after the unfortunate death of Mr. George Floyd, about this 21st century policing reform support to that. And I, and I really was impressed and grateful to our law enforcement leadership in our county who embraced that. And they not only are trying to reform their organizations here, but they took it to other areas of the state to spread that document. And I want to thank Sheriff Boyd for doing that. And I also want to thank our county staff, who has done an extraordinary job. And as we get ready to open our buildings to the public in a safe manner, I think our county staff should continue to lead them by example by following these four pillars. And I think if we all do our small part in this, I think we can do well in our county, and that's all we can do, that's all we can control here within our own neighborhoods and in our own community. And lastly, as Commissioner Mazinski was talking about, veterans, Commissioner Mazinski, last year I had the privilege of going to Normandy, and I went and saw the museums and the battlefields, and I, you know, I cannot impress how touched I was. And, you know, these were individuals who went and fought wars, not just to protect our country, but to liberate other countries and, and give them the freedom. So I think the best way of honoring them today is to fight this virus. And the best way of doing it is not with any arms or anything, but just practice these four pillars. That way we can protect our communities, and we can get our community and our country back on track with the economy, because people are suffering, and the best way we can get them back to work is to control the virus. So I want to wish everybody a happy Independence Day and the Fourth of July, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. I, I join you in wishing everyone a happy Fourth, but I do have some, some concerns. That civic responsibility you talked about is, is troubling to me. While, while there are many, many businesses that are promoting social distancing and good hygiene and practices, there are others that are not. And there are other people who somehow thinks it's a, think it's a political statement to wear a mask or not wear a mask. And yesterday, our number was 19. The previous, that's the highest we've had in probably three or four weeks. And while nine of those 19 were in Westville Correctional, that reflects on our community, because the staff at Westville Correctional are our neighbors and our friends and our relatives. So that means that the virus is continuing to grow. When you look at the national numbers, every state around us, if you look at those national masks about, around COVID, all the states around us, Ohio, Michigan, Illinois, are bright red, as in their numbers have gone up. Our, while our state is still showing a surge but not quite as defined, across the country, the data has, the numbers have surged by 80%. The last four days have been the highest COVID days since the virus began back in March. What's extremely concerning to me is that the numbers indicate that folks under 50 are now not only getting the virus but transmitting it. So we all were under 50 at one time, and we know that when you're young, you think that you're pretty darn invisible. But science is science, and the, the science is really clear, no matter whether you are this party or that party, whether you are left or right, the science is really clear. And the scientists and the doctors and people who have spent their life and their career working on infectious disease control are telling us what to do, and that is wear a mask, social distance, practice exceptionally detailed hand hygiene. It's, it's not rocket science. It is, it is, part of it's common sense. But, you know, when I look at the crowded beaches, I look at Michigan City, crowded, crowded beaches, nobody practicing social distancing, no one wearing masks, carloads of people, all dense, looking at the, at the bars, full of people, all close together, not wearing masks. I mean, we are, as humans, we are very social creatures, so it's very hard for us to not have giant Fourth of July parties. That's kind of, you know, we have our traditional food and our, our traditional, you know, sparklers and the kids play in the pool and all of that. But this is, this year is different than any other year that any of us have experienced in our lifetime. But science is science, and we have a civic responsibility to one another to make sure whether we are concerned about ourselves, we certainly should be concerned about a child who is struggling with cancer, who could pick up the virus, an elderly person who is immune-compromised, a person of any age who's had surgery. I mean, those are all common situations. And as Americans, we are used to tough challenges. That, those tough challenges have created the sinew that makes America strong and makes Americans resilient across the world. Everyone talks about our, our innovative spirits and our resilience. That's what we need now. So it's, it's not, it's not, you know, it's not just about us, it's about other people. And as Americans, that's what has made us, our country strong. And in Lepore County, it's what's made Lepore County a very, very special place to live, to work, and to raise our families. So I strongly encourage everyone, whether you are a county staff person who's, our staff has been just amazing during the last six, seven, eight months. They've met every challenge and exceeded, and with exceptional positive attitudes. But whether you are a staff person, a community member, a business, please do everything that you can, because I, I would like Lepore County to stay out of the mix of the surge that's happening all around us. Again, this is the Fourth of July. We have lots to be thankful for, particularly those who've given their lives for the, for the rights. We talked about the right to vote. That's a right that the members of our military fought hard for, no matter what year you're speaking of, they're there to defend our, the rights of, of all Americans. So with that, yes?
There's something you said that just sparked something here.
Sure.
About the youth that think they're bulletproof. I got a call last week from Mayor Dermody, but kids on Waverly Road jumping off the bridge, which on one side is Pine Lake, that's the county side, on the other side is Stone Lake, which is the city side. I talked with Mr. Friedman about that. We put up signs. Like I, the first thing I said, you know, it's a game, I guess, to see who can jump the closest to the boats going through there. That's a problem that's going to cure itself when somebody hits the boat. I have a friend who got tangled up with a, with an outboard motor and lost his leg. Okay? By, I mean, you're going to get a ticket, are you going to get arrested? Because we got a lot of people watching that situation, but I, and I just thought it was a couple of kids. My wife showed me on Facebook, just like a dozen kids lined up, you know? It's a stupid thing to do. Every Fourth of July, we have, we have people in the burn unit, we have people in the emergency room, and we have people in jail because they're doing stupid things. This is one of the stupidest I've heard of lately. But where's the parents? I can guarantee you, I don't care if a kid is 20 years old, if it was my kid and I found out he was doing something stupid like that, we would have to employ a little old-fashioned discipline. So I, I hope that somebody doesn't get maimed or hurt really bad. The boaters are complaining, and I don't blame them, but this is something that's really stupid, and there's going to be a lot of people watching. So if you're doing something stupid, that or other stupid things, you're going to get either in the hospital, or maybe in the jail, or fined. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. Thanks for that reminder about safety. Much appreciated. So happy July 4th, everyone. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.